All right, the House will please come to order. Our little organizational things up here with the Chief Clerk, Majority Floor Leader. Madam Minority Floor Leader, please, with the privilege of the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker, privilege. Friends, I know that all of us have been concerned about Representative Newsom and that she safely got to her family down in Colorado. I have a text from her saying that she is with her family and that she's doing well and that she thanks us all for our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you very much. So we don't quite have all the members back in the House, but we certainly have a quorum. So we will continue with our business. So I think it's in order to report some of the actions of the Senate. And as I mentioned earlier, this is not normal course of business when we're working bills, subjects. I think it is an appropriate course of action when we are talking about the process. The Senate also did not, did not adopt joint rules. They did amend their Senate rules to allow the same appropriation process that we did, which was, I think, House Rule 1. And they did not adopt the House Rule 3, which was the remote participation, which that's certainly their prerogative, those are their rules, no impact on us. So ladies and gentlemen, we are at a point where we have no special session joint rules. As we, if we proceed forward, we will be under the standard rules of the 66th Wyoming Legislature with those two exceptions, remote participation and the referral to, to the Appropriations Committee issue. So I think this may be a little, a little backwards, but I think it's probably appropriate because, as you know, we're going to consider a motion to adjourn. So I think, I think it would be, and a motion to adjourn is not debatable. So I think it is appropriate that we maybe, I'll treat these as privileges of the floor to just maybe state a brief case about why either we adjourn or we continue forward. And so is there any members that would like to make a, take a personal privilege about the motion before us? It will be coming. Any member who would like to make a, Representative Gray, privilege, please proceed. I don't know who you're yielding to, but I recognize you, please proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It was about a month and a half ago, I will never forget it, I sat down, eaten dinner, and it was actually the day I found out that something I had been working on for six months was not going to come to fruition. And the speech from the Chief Executive, the executive branch at the federal level, came on the screen. I had not seen the headlines about what was going to be in that speech. And I will tell you, I was appalled by the tone and the substance of that speech. And I believe that if we do not take action as a country, that that will be an inflection point in our country and not a good inflection point. The dictatorial tone and substance of that speech is not acceptable in a constitutional republic. And it is our job as legislators, the state of Wyoming, to take our 10th Amendment powers, powers in the 9th Amendment, or powers across the Constitution, and to assert that we are not going to stand for what the Chief Executive and the executive branch at the federal level is doing right now. Mentioned this earlier, but I've been very disturbed by the portrayal of this session by the mainstream media, was very disturbed by the letter today from the Chief Executive here in our state, which appear to ignore or not, at least not mention, key implications of what is happening at the federal level, which is that, and this was the point of that speech, right? It was an attempt to provide political cover or to provide a nudge to force big business or to send the message that they wanted big business to move forward with their own mandates because they know this will probably be struck down at the federal level. And that has indeed happened, it will continue to happen. And without action by this body, that threat implied or direct, whatever it was, it's there and it's the reason why many of these mandates have been issued and are set to go into place. We have one mandate that preceded that speech and is set to go into place in five days. And I can tell you, I've gotten to know the incredible healthcare workers across our state, and I'm very disturbed by the change in tone from what we saw in 2020. The immense gratitude and now forcing individuals to take this vaccine and saying that they're going to lose their jobs if they don't submit. The exemptions, I can tell you, I've talked to individuals in my community and in other communities, it's been all over the place. Some religious exemptions granted, some not. I don't understand how a religious exemption can get denied. I mean, that's between somebody and God. How can somebody deny a religious exemption? I don't understand that. Medical exemptions, medical exemptions signed by doctors that are denied. Pregnant women who are not able to get exemptions. And I'm sorry, there is no way statistically, and this is science, it's statistics, there is no way to know what the effect this is going to have on pregnant women because you don't have longitudinal data because you haven't had a long enough period to track it by definition. It's science, it's statistics. We need to take action here. This, this is not making sense. We're 18 months of this, and until we take a stand, it is not going to stop, I'm afraid. And there needs to be some sense in this conversation. I agree, we need to strike a balance. We have bills that do that. We have a process now that I guess folks that we're concerned about should be satisfied with. Let's continue, let's get this work done, and let's take action at this critical moment in our republic's history so we can tell our kids, our grandkids, our constituencies, our neighbors, that we did the right thing at this inflection point and we did all we could do. Please vote no on the motion to adjourn and let's continue the work, the citizens of Wyoming. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Gray. So I know there's probably not many people in here that don't know how they're going to vote on this, and we did not adopt the five-minute rule. We did not adopt five minutes, but hopefully we can continue to be brief in our comments. Thank you, Representative Nyman. And as you, as you will recall, we're not debating a bill. What I'm offering is a privilege of the floor for you to express, hopefully in a succinct manner, your opposition or your interest in continuing this session. Representative Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I haven't really spoke up through the course of the day because we were kind of watching this play out. I haven't been through a special session before, kind of laying this out, trying to better understand how this works. But I will speak on behalf of the people that I represent in District 1. They sent me down here to do their business and represent them in this legislature. I've heard multiple times today where this is, I've even heard the word inconvenient. I guarantee you it's inconvenient. Losing your job is very inconvenient. I personally will not be losing my job if this mandate goes through. I don't know how many people in this room have the possibility of losing their job and changing their livelihood because of the passing or the not passing of this legislation or the opening or the, or the working of this session. But I know folks in my country that are going to lose their jobs, and they're good at their jobs. They're good at them today. They'll be good at them right up until the day that they say, I'm not willing to take the chance on a vaccine that I do not feel comfortable taking. Sorry. You are no longer able to fulfill your responsibilities to this company or whatever. I've got people telling me that it's not just the fact that we're not willing to give up some of our freedoms and set aside some of our issues or our personal beliefs. People are telling me that, listen, Chip, he said, you know what? If this thing goes through, I have 14 employees, my 12 of my 14 employees will leave. I am officially out of business. I have another person come to me and said, you know what? If this goes through, I will lose all of my employees, and he is in assisted care. He said, I will have to make arrangements to send these people home, back to their families. Talked to another constituent that said, if this thing goes through and you guys don't act, it's not just that my mother is not going to be able to be in that assisted living anymore, I have to quit my job to take care of my mom. And I think it takes a lot of nerve to sit down here and say, boy, you know, guys, this is darn inconvenient. Try figuring out where you're going to come with, home with the money to pay your bills. Granted, there's a lot of job opportunities in Wyoming right now. How many of us want to go and cross over and train to another type of, of job because we're not comfortable taking a vaccine that has been ordered under an emergency mandate that we really don't know? And I defy any of you in here to come up with any honest answer to the fact that we do know what's going to happen if you get this injection long-term. Average vaccines take from 10 to 12 years to get them into circulation, tested on animals for years previous to, and then into humans. And I know you've all read it, and I'm not telling anything you don't know, there are, there's crap out there from both directions. There is. You can make a justifiable argument for anything you want. But here's what I do know. We fought to get out from under British rule because we said, you can't make me do that. I'm not going to do it. I want representation. I want to be able to hear all the information, I want to be able to make a good and well-founded decision, and our Constitution in our state clearly clears, clears that up for us. In section, in Article 1, Section 38, it says it. We have a right to our health, healthcare choices. Lady came up to me, says, yep, you got a right, you got a right to lose your job if you don't take this shot. I don't know about the rest of you, but that drew a knot in my guts. Freedom is choices. And are we really going to be so inconvenienced that we would take away the freedom of people to be able to hold on to their livelihoods because they're not sure about the safety or the long-term effects of a vaccine? That I defy again, any of you to tell me what's going to happen to the people that have taken it 10 years down the road and who's liable? I've also heard that the other vaccine that has been signed off by the FDA is not being released. We're still under the vaccine that's under the emergency release. Because liability comes with that, so we're holding that back. And now the next step we look at, and I don't belabor this point, and I appreciate the time, Mr. Speaker, what are you going to do when they come down, they tell you kids have to be shot? Moderna and all these are, vaccine companies and all these folks are saying, now we got the answer for that. You've got a one in a million chance as a child of dying of COVID-19, over a 99.6 or 7% chance of recovery. And now, potentially, they just picked a number out of the air, 100 people. If you've got 100 folks in your business, guess what? You're going to, you're going to require this, or I'm going to find the guts out of you, I'm going to break you. Because it's for everybody's health and safety. Okay? That's great. We sit here and we knuckle under and we take that, and then we go, hey, by the way, we're going to move that to 50. Oh, let's go to 10 because we're not getting enough compliance. Who's next? Thank God you're not affected right now, but who's going to be there to speak up for you when it comes to your door? And boy, if you can't tell in the past 18 months, if it's not on its way speedily to your door, you're living in some other world. Please vote to keep this session in. Do not vote to adjourn. Though I am sorry that you are inconvenienced, guess what, folks? When you took on the responsibility of running for this legislative office, you took on the responsibility of doing the people's work. I got crap that I can't catch up. Weather takes care of my stuff. I won't get a chance to go back and make up. But I'll be here. I'll stay as long as it's necessary to address these issues and to provide the protections that our state deserves, our people deserve. We're legislators. That's what they've called us to do. Please do not vote to adjourn. Let's do the people's business.
Thank you. Representative Yen. And again, for the members of the audience, this is not normal course of business, but a motion to adjourn is not debatable. And I think it is, it's my judgment that there are some thoughts that need to be shared since the most majority of our day was regarding process. This may be more substantive to the issues before us, so, Representative Yen.
Privilege of the floor.
Privilege, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So members, I will be urging you to adjourn, and I want to try to get into a feeling of what the feeling is on the floor. So I think we've conflated a couple of different issues here, right? So I think many of our members are angry at the federal government and believe it's constitutional overreach. And I think I understand that argument, I may disagree with that argument, I understand that argument, but I think the right place to deal with constitutional disagreements are in the court system. We all know that that is already planning to happen. The governor's letter reiterated that that is what's going to happen. It is going to go through the court process and determining whether those requirements, whenever they get enacted, are constitutional or not. The place of the legislature is to pass laws for the state of Wyoming. So the question before us is, do we want to fight constitutional mandates? Do we want to fight the constitutionality of federal mandates? That's question one. Do we want to prevent private businesses for, for enacting requirements on their own? That's question two, I think, for you, for you all. And then question three is, do we want to prevent private businesses for enacting requirements for their customers or any other sort of discussion like that? For example, in my community, we just sold out our theater for the first time in two years, and they did that because they've made people feel safe with the vaccine requirement for that organization. And that organization is trying to negotiate to bring other artists in town, and those artists also have those requirements, and they're going to say no if we, for example, as a legislator, institute a law that says that they're not allowed to do that. So I think those are the three questions. I think number one, we don't need the session for that. Like I said, can be handled in the court, that's what the judiciary system is for. That's why we have three separate branches of government. And, you know, as legislators, I think we do have that empowering of having our soft power to urge the Chief Executive, you got to make sure this happens or, or other things to ensure that, that they, they go through with his promise that he's going to go through the judiciary system. And then with number two, I'm, I think you've heard the letter from my caucus, but we're, I'm vehemently against us telling private businesses that that's what we're going to do. We're going to restrict them from deciding on their own who they can hire and who they can't hire based on a choice they made? We're talking about choices, we're talking about freedom, but we're impinging on, on another person's freedom, the employer. If you run a business, you're saying you can't, you don't have the freedom to choose that, that way or the other way. You're saying, based on another person's choice, for example, if I am a smoker, right? I'm making a healthcare choice on my own, whether I want to smoke or not. An employer can decide whether or not I, as a human, am making a choice, should I smoke or will my employer lose my job? There's a consequence to those choices. I have the freedom, sure. I have the freedom to smoke or not smoke, but the employer has the freedom to make a choice based on my choice because that choice has consequences. These freedoms, we have those freedoms, they aren't being impinged, they just have consequences when you exercise them, right? Because they, they happen when we interact in society with other individuals, right? And so the, the other person has the choice of whether to associate with a person who smokes or not. And so for number two, I don't think that's an emergency or we need a special session to do that. I'm not interested in pinching in private business rights on that, in that realm, are you? And if you are not, I'd ask you, then what are we doing here? Is that really an emergency for the special session? And then number three, the rights of private businesses to allow who they let in the door. Again, we're, as a tourism industry, number two in the entire state, we're going to lose business if you tell people that they're not allowed to, they're not allowed to make accommodations for safety in their own business. Because that's, that's what got people in the door in my community to actually start going to see shows again. You're going to tell that business that, that it's going to be that much more difficult to get people back in the door by requiring this of them, that they can't make that decision for themselves. And if we don't need to do that, then what? Then, then for number one, number two, number three, those are three reasons that I assume that, that we're kind of putting in this one special session. I don't think we need to do any of those in this special session, so I would ask you to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. So members, these are privileges, it's going to be one per person, this is not second and third reading or anything like that. And so we'll proceed, Representative Baer.
Mr. Speaker, privilege of the floor.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I want to start by reading actually from our Constitution, which each of you swore an oath to uphold. We're all very familiar with Article 1, Section 38, but I just want to read it one time real quickly. Each competent adult shall have the right to make his or her own healthcare decisions. The parent, guardian, or legal representative of any other natural person shall have the right to make healthcare decisions for that person. One part of this particular act that you may not be as familiar with is subsection D. That was A that I just wrote, read to you. So here's subsection D. The state of Wyoming, that's us, shall act to preserve these rights from undue governmental infringement. There is need for us to act. The federal government has threatened to do something that is in a direct contradiction to what our oath and our Constitution state. The good representative from House District 16 stated that, well, we can leave this to the courts. It's my understanding that when the federal government dictates something to corporations or employers, the state itself has no standing in that courtroom. So we're going to leave it up to the good people of Wyoming to defend themselves. If these people who are making that argument were willing to stand up and pay for attorney's fees and the long-drawn-out court cases that will take to get it to the Supreme Court to make these decisions, then I would believe them that that's really what they want. Currently, I think this is a delay tactic to keep us from actually doing our duty. We must stand up and protect these liberties which are enshrined in our Constitution and also which tells us that we have a responsibility as legislators who have taken an oath to this Constitution to uphold those freedoms. So I ask you to vote no on this adjournment, and I hope that each of us can fulfill those duties as outlined in the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to return to a member that spoke previously because he has a mention to make to the floor, so Representative Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a, just a brief, I was made aware that I used a couple of words in my, in my discussion there that were inappropriate on the, on the floor, so I just wanted to apologize to the body there. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that, and next time I will, I will use the word manure instead, so, all right. I'm used to that up at home. All right, thank you.
Thank you. As a large animal practitioner, I was not offended, but I appreciate that it is not proper decorum. Representative Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Privilege of the floor.
Please proceed.
I appreciate the comments that were just made because that's why I came up here, because I took some offense at the way that was stated. All of us are here for the right reason, and we're all willing to put in the time and the effort to do what is appropriate. My concern about operating this special session under the regular rules is that we will have no limit on the number of bills that will come before this body. We don't know how many days will be required, other than it won't be more than 20 for us to wade through all of those bills. I voted for the special session, I voted for the rules, and now we're at that juncture where we have to decide, how long are we going to be here? It's more than just what the impact does on each of us individually in our, you know, life beyond the legislature back home, but it also has to do with the budget process, it has to do with committees. My committee has been preempted now because of the special session. We've got work to get done in order to be ready for the budget session. So I really have some doubts that, that this body will do well by operating under the regular rules on this very important topic. My concern is not that I don't believe that this topic needs our action, it's not that I don't believe that, you know, people in my community are facing layoffs in the next five days. It troubles me greatly, and that's why I voted for the special session. But I think operating under the regular rules, highly problematic, so, for what it's worth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Representative Otten.
Yes, privileged, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you. And just to comment on my last colleague's comments, I appreciate that too because we really don't know the direction that things can go. But I just want to mention a couple of things. One is, in my One is, in, in my experience with the people from over the state that I've been in contact with, the private businesses are not the ones that are primarily the big employers. It is most of the government employers, the schools, the hospitals, those that receive federal funding, those that are involved in Medicaid and Medicaid expansion. Those are the employers that really make a difference here. And so while we don't want to mess with federal things, because boy, that would really be deep. What we do want to do is give the people of Wyoming the right, which I don't, I never saw where it should have been taken away to their health decisions. And families, some get this inoculation, some don't. That's, that's a private privilege, depending on who you are, what your health is like, and, and what you want to do, because you will reap the consequences. So I, I would just like to mention that and a couple of other things. I disagree on, on the point of let's leave it to the court. You know, we see that in our federal government. We're seeing it here today. Our legislature, our governing bodies were not created for the courts to be on the top of this pyramid. The legislature, the people that get elected every two years and every four years, we are the people, especially here in the House, we're the people that represent our constituents. We're the people that they call, we're the people that they reach out to. They're the people we depend on in this body of 60 to do what's right for them. We are supposed to make the determinations according to that for what is right for our counties, our districts, our senate districts, and our state. This, this, the way it was set up, the legislature is the governing body. We are supposed to have that power of, of what is right for our constituents. Next comes the executive to obey those rules and to put them into force. And then the court, if there is a problem, not to rule, but to take over things that, that deemed to be a problem. So it seems to me that we're a little upside down here. And I would encourage you, I don't know how it's going to go because there's so many different things in here. But I would encourage you, we've got, I'm on the, uh, the one committee for health and labor. And one of the things where myriads of money goes every year, and we need more and more and more money for, because we've got health problems. We've got, um, suicide problems. We've got mental health problems. Have you talked to the constituents that can't sleep, that are worried about their jobs, worried about their families, worried about what this inoculation is going to do to them? Worried about whether or not they're going to be able to have children, whether or not, um, their child is going to have all these effects and need special education in the future? These, these are viable concerns. And we need to let people have that opportunity to make those decisions based with their doctor for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Representative LeBeau. We are on privileges of the floor. Preceding a motion to adjourn, which the majority floorly will make if we get to the end of our discussion. Representative Privileges. Representative LeBeau.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Privilege of the floor.
Please proceed.
Dos, Nate Aina. Hello, my relatives. Hisseja, na'asitna. My Arapaho name is Coming Woman. My English name is Andy LeBeau. Nanana, hinani, hisse. I'm Northern Arapaho. And I humbly stand before you today. In August of 2020, Arapaho elders had the fortunate, unfortunate duty to develop the Arapaho word for COVID-19. Gokdawawaku, which translates in English to a strange sickness that we have never encountered. The elders of the Eastern Shoshone and Northern Arapaho tribes have known for a long time because of personal experiences that illnesses have different outcomes on different populations. In the Eastern Shoshone and Northern Arapaho cultures, we know that viruses show us how interconnected and independent we all are on each other. We start knowing this early in life. It isn't hard for us to see that the health of the whole tribe depends on everybody doing their part. The fact that COVID-19 disproportionately impacted my communities, particularly our culture, our language, and our traditional knowledge. The Eastern Shoshone and Northern Arapaho tribal nations of this great state responded to the pandemic by exercising sovereignty and acted swiftly and strongly. They carefully followed the guidelines provided by the center tasked to create the most up-to-date medical knowledge of prevention and control of diseases and implemented guidelines and policies that were effective. They saved lives. Nate Aina, my relatives. Some of you may call it a mandate. We call it taking care of each other. It's true, from the jump, our tribal governments rallied around our elders when the rest of the country was saying elders were dispensable. Going against elders is against everything our culture teaches us. When our elders hurt, we hurt. So we do with everything within our power to protect, protect them. Again, it wasn't hard for us to rally around our elders. My hope is for the people of Wyoming to be able to put aside the politics. And maybe just for once, listen to the wisdom that comes out of indigenous country. We are all Wyoming. Natives, white, immigrants, sixth generation since time immemorial. And we all have the opportunity, opportunity to sacrifice and serve each other. And those are our values. Some people have forgotten that. And we are paying the cost. But I would invite you, my colleagues, my neighbors, my friends, Nate Aina, my relatives. I care about you and I believe you care about me. Turn back to the relationship with each other. Turn away from your TV set, your talk radio, and remember that we all depend on each other so that our grandchildren's grandchildren can be proud of what we did. With over more than 700,000 deaths in our country, one out of 500 Americans dying from this virus, over 140,000 kids in our country who are, have been orphaned or whose sole caregiver has died because of COVID-19. We can't count this virus out. After all, my relatives, the last time I checked, we are still in a pandemic. Ho, ho. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative LeBeau. Further discussion. Representative Jennings, privilege of the floor. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I, I wasn't going to get up and speak. And, uh, actually, I appreciate the previous speaker about that we do care about people. And that is probably why every one of us is here. And, um, so as I was leaving and making this decision and leaving my work behind, had a constituent come up to me and say, you know, this is probably one of the most important decisions you'll make in your life. And I look at these people around and the people that have contacted us, the people that are, have their jobs on the line. The representative from District One, I think, put it very well. I was glad that, uh, the representative from the east-west side of the state forgot which side it was on. You know, they care about their people. And that's why we're here. And I would implore you to please, let's do this. I don't know what the result's going to be. But let's, let's look at these bills and let's look at these people that we're going to, uh, we're going to make decisions that are going to impact their lives. And it's important. Who knows what two months will bring? I don't know whether we strike back at the overreach or not. I don't know if we hit a happy medium. I do know that we were elected to stand between the federal government and businesses and people of Wyoming. And so I would ask you to vote to not adjourn so that we can actually look at this. And we can actually do what we were elected to do. And that's, that's to provide state protection for our citizens. So please vote no.
All right. Any other member would like, request a privilege of the floor? Privilege of the floor. Representative Nicholas. Please proceed.
Thank you, privilege of the floor, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
So ladies and gentlemen, just, um, for those of you who have been here, when I've been at this microphone, I have been an anti, um, federal government overlap, overreach person since the day I walked in here. I don't care if it was seat belts or speeding, take fines, speed limits, um, you name it. I, I've just always been against them. And gun control is the same thing. It should be local control and local folks making those decisions. It's, that's just the way it ought to be. And this issue is no different. These decisions should be made locally and, and it should be our responsibility to make those decisions. I think we all, for the most part, believe in that and have that position. But there's more to it than this. So let me just walk down some of the arguments that, because it's such an incredible emotional issue right now. This is, this, this has been, you know, the abortion issue of, of, of 2020 or 2016 because everyone's up here impassioned about the way they feel. And they feel that they're being trotted upon by the other and not, and they're not being heard. And so it's, it's just a tough position to be in. It really is. But I just want to run through some interesting facts and some interesting numbers. There is no doubt. I mean, from all the medical information out there, that we are in a pandemic of the unvaccinated. If everyone was vaccinated, this, this pandemic would be gone. I mean, that's, that's just what the data shows. It's, it's about that simple. So how many people have died in Wyoming? 101, 1,150 people have died. One of them was my father, who passed away as a result of COVID. I have a brother who, uh, lives in Missouri, who's a 68-year-old, healthier than I am. He was on an ECMO machine for seven, uh, weeks and died nearly three times while on the bed. And now he's up and moving around and, and working again. But, but he can't walk more than two blocks. I mean, and, and so it's a devastating, um, pandemic that we need to take seriously. There's been over 100,000 cases in Wyoming. In the United States, 737,000 people have died. That's more than all our major wars combined in the United States. Uh, other than the, the original continental war. Civil War was 214,000. World War II was 290,000. World War II was 54, uh, World War I, 54,000. We have more people dying in the last 18 months from COVID than those combined. So we are in a war. We're in a war with COVID. We're also in a war with, uh, this belief of, of the, of the unvaccinated beliefs. And it's a strong, incredible thing. The folks that just don't want to be vaccinated. It's not just COVID. COVID is, I think, you know, it's, it's taken a higher level. But for measles, pertussis, rubella, smallpox, polio, all of those things. So if, if you go to the World Health Organization and, and the, um, AMA, American Medical Association, the greatest lifesaver that mankind has developed since the 1800s is the vaccine. They fear, it's hard to figure out a number, but the estimates are that vaccines and vaccinations, even since 1980, have saved anywhere between 200 to 300 million people in the world. Without that, those people would be gone. And it's, so it's, I'm emotional about that. My son was vaccinated. And he's a permanently disabled adult because of a childhood vaccination. So I have a personal, um, you know, issues about it. But I also read the statistics. I learned more about vaccines when that happened. And I'm convinced that we're saving lives. And, and sometimes, um, you, you end up on the short end of the stick. And that just happens. But on the other hand, pertussis was killing two or three million people a year back in the 19, early 1900s. And now, which is smallpox. And now it's, it's, um, it's whooping cough, excuse me. And now that doesn't happen anymore because of the vaccination. So for the sacrifice of the few, um, we've saved hundreds of millions of lives, literally. Let's talk about this constitutional issue. I'm reading excerpts of the constitution. I, I would just respectfully say, I'm an attorney. I've, I'm familiar with this issue. There was, I don't know, um, those of you who read the, um, the LSO paper that came out, but it explains it pretty well. This is not a constant, unconstitutional mandate. Ladies and gentlemen, I would just respectfully say it is not. And so when you take the constitution out of context, we all get in trouble. But in, in, in a nutshell, the constitution, it, it has rights for everybody and you have to read the whole thing in context. So you have the constitutional right of, of freedom of health, but we also have the constitutional right to protect ourselves from, from, from things that can in, influence us. Employers have a constitutional right. Take, take the gun control issue. You want the right to bear arms, a constitutional right. If you don't have the right to take your gun and walk into someone's home, if they don't want you to, because they have a constitutional right in their home not to have someone else with a firearm there. And so does a business. And so all of those things are wrapped into an overall interpretation and it's a balance of everybody's rights. So I would respectfully submit that this is not a constitutional issue. It, do I want to pass some laws that, that help instruct and give, um, directive to the United States government to please not give us mandates? Absolutely. But I've read all of these bills. In any bill that's, if we throw out the ones that are, have unconstitutional components to them, we don't have any bills. So we have to figure out a way to do this and do it right. And I would just respectfully submit that we can't do that in two days. And it's, and I, you know, my recommendation early on was let's form a special committee. We could have done it two months ago or three months ago, who walks through the constitutional issues, does all those things, come back with three or four bills and presents them. That's what we did in the last special session. There's ways we can do this. And honestly, let me give you one more example. But there's a big hospital in Casper. They have, they're in a quandary. They will lose more employees if we don't have the mandate than if we have the mandate. So, or no, it's the other way around. If, if we take away the mandate and say, you can't force a mandate as that company has, they will lose more employees than if the, if they enforce the mandate. Because there's lots of staff, on staff, they're saying, if my coworker is unvaccinated, then I'm not coming back to work because it's a dangerous work environment. And so, once again, it's a quandary. And so with lots of emotional issues, but I would just respectfully suggest that we can fix this, we'll do our best and we'll take on the federal government. Let's do it in a way that makes sense with the right data and the right information and a full debate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Representative Obermuller, privilege of the floor. Please proceed. And thank you for using the fourth mic. It was feeling lonely up there.
Privilege, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Well, one additional perspective on this, uh, my world in Wyoming, centered around the construction industry. And they're represented in every one of your towns. I've been in all of your towns, I believe, over my career. Back on the back streets, the railroad spurs, the truck routes, the gravel roads on the outskirts of your towns.
Representative Obermuller, I'm just going to ask you to speak as close to that mic as you can because we don't have access to the controls. So just a little closer, please, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know who all the major contractors are in Wyoming. All of them have reached out to me and I suppose you have gotten those emails too, except that you have so many emails that it's hard to sort out and maybe you've missed them. But the construction industry has a message for our deliberation today. And their message is stand down. Go home. Don't complicate an already difficult situation. The contractors in the state don't do all their work through a filter of the state. Some of their work and major work comes directly through the federal government. And so they're in a real quandary with this. And their message is, please do not complicate a difficult situation with more mandates coming out of the state. They're trying to manage what they have right now. So that's the message from, uh, my industry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So members, actually, I was pointing out a rule that we do have a speaking limit for privileges. And, um, And so we're going to start running a timer. It's five minutes, which I don't know that anybody's exceeded five minutes. But I think Representative Hallinan, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, privilege of the floor.
Please proceed.
I thought I might correct a few things that have been said on the floor. One of them is that the vaccine prevents people from getting the va- the virus or spreading the virus. We know that scientifically has been proven that people that have had the vaccine both spread the virus and get the virus again. This vaccine is not like other vaccines. It is a leaky virus. That's why people that have been vaccinated can get the virus again. So we know that it is not like, say, the measles virus or these other virus anti-vax immunizations. They work, but this one does not. I am not anti-vax. The fact is that vaccinations do work. But this one doesn't work like the rest of them. It's an MRA virus or a vaccine. And we don't have the experience with this virus that would tell us that it's going to be ended by giving the vaccination. Finally, I might ask, how does a person who has not been vaccinated give the virus to somebody who has been vaccinated if it works? Now, I have had the vaccination myself. But I don't know that I could recommend it for young people, for kids example. But that seems to be coming down the pike. I think we need to look at this, this vaccine very carefully before we approve it any further. And I think this is a very good time for us to address the issue here in our legislature. So with that said, Mr. Speaker, I urge that we turn down the attempt to cut off the debate. So with that, I end my speech. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative. Further discussion, so members, I'm going to give a, so I don't see anybody going to the microphone, so I'm going to make a couple of comments. One comment is to the actions down the floor. And because they're, they did not take an affirmative action, we do not get a message. If we were expecting a message, we'd wait till it is official. But they are proceeding. It does not mean this body cannot vote to adjourn. This body is an independent body within a bicameral house. That vote is still yours. They can proceed and then we will, if we adjourn, we will sort out what that means. If one body can be in adjournment for up to three days by the constitution without the leave of the other. So it doesn't mean it ended. That means we're, we're in a unknown place. Quite honestly, we will be in an unknown place. The second thing is, and I think this goes to a comment that was made by one of the folks on the floor about what this, if we proceed, what would be, what would be coming at us? And if we proceed under normal, under our regular rules, myself, as the presiding officer, assigns the bills to committees. There is no introductory vote as there is in a special session. I have a list of six bills that I would assign to three different committees to be worked out of the 20 that, and that's because I will abide by that it's only vaccine, COVID vaccine mandate specific. So that eliminates many, several other bills and a few other things. And I think within these six bills and in understanding with the Senate that they're going to introduce a different potential set of bills, that we would cover the full gamut that may be before you and nothing additional. If the body wanted something additional, they would have to take it out of that office. You would have to overrule the presiding officer. That doesn't mean you can't do it. But my intent would be to stay, if we proceed, to stay within the content of why this special session was requested, why it was voted on by a majority and why we are sitting here today. So I just want to clarify that as at least my, in my role as a presiding officer. There would be a list of bills, there are six bills before me. The Senate would have a different list of bills. Those are the only bills that I would assign to committee that would be heard unless the body, the body wanted to do something else. Further discussion, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move the following. Number one, that the House of Representatives, 66 Wyoming State Legislature, be adjourned from the October 2021 special session until a date and time which are determined jointly by the President of the Senate and by the Speaker of the House of Representatives for the purpose of calling the Senate and the House back into session. Number two, that if no such time is established before December 31st, 2021, the House of Representatives, 66 Wyoming State Legislature Special Session is adjourned, sign and die, effective at 12 o'clock noon on that date. And the legislative budget session, 66 Wyoming State Legislature shall convene on the 14th day of February 2022 at the hour of 10 o'clock AM. Number three, that the House of Representatives specifically concurs in any identical motion adopted by the Senate. Four, that if the Senate fails to concur in the action of the House of Representatives under paragraphs one through three of this motion, by adopting an identical motion applicable to the Senate, the House of Representatives, 66 Wyoming State Legislature Special Session is adjourned, sign and die.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. So to be clear, ladies and gentlemen, the motion before you, the majority leader, is that we will adjourn to reconvene in February for the budget session. That was the motion. Now, and there's the part four of that says, if they fail to concur, we still are in adjournment. Now, as you know, as I mentioned, the constitution has a provision about three days without the leave of the other body. So that is untested. I do not know. I do not know where that leaves us. So with that, Chief Clerk, please call, and members, just to be clear, this is a majority of the members present. A majority of the members present. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Andrew. Baker. Banks. Bear. Blackburn. Brown. Burkhart excused. Burt. Clausen. Connolly. Craig O. Duncan. Eklund. Eyre. Flitner. Fortner. Excused. Gray. Greer. Hallinan. Haroldson. Harshman. Heiner. Henderson. Jennings. Kenner. Knapp. Larson Lloyd. Larson Dan. LeBeau. McGuire. Nyman. Newsom excused. Nicholas. Oakley. Obermuller. O'Hern. Olson. Ottman. Paxton. Provenza. Rodriguez Williams. Romero Martinez. Roscoe. Schwartz. Sherwood. Simpson. Summers. Stiff. Stevar. Sweeney. Walters. Washett. Western. Worf excused. Williams. Wilson. Winter. Yin. Swannitzer. Mr. Speaker. Closing vote, are there any changes? Closing vote. The vote is closed. 21 aye, 35 no, four excused.
Members, by your vote, you have voted not to adjourn. We're at that order of business of reading, of reading an introduction of bills. And I'll give the Chief Clerk just a moment. As the Chief Clerk is getting ready to introduce bills. Just so we know, we have adopted a remote participation rule. So I see Coach Harshman moving to the door. Anyway, there is a remote participation this afternoon will be taken up with committee meetings. We'll make announcements on a committee meetings. There'll be three committees that can sort out when they're going to be meeting. Are we ready, Chief Clerk? All right. We're at that order of business of reading and referral of bills. The first bill for our consideration, House Bill 1001.
House Bill, House Bill 1001, sponsored by Greer.
First reading of the bill.
COVID-19 vaccine employer mandates.
The second bill for our consideration is House Bill, oh, House Bill 1001 is referred to Committee Number Nine Minerals. I'm sorry, I don't have a script in front of me, we're making it up. Next bill for our consideration is House Bill 1002.
House Bill 1002, sponsored by Representative Summers.
First reading of the bill.
Federal COVID vaccine mandates, prohibition and remedies two.
House Bill 1002 is introduced and referred to Committee Number One Judiciary. Next bill for our consideration, House Bill 1005.
House Bill 1005, sponsored by Representative Hallinan.
First reading of the bill.
COVID-19 vaccine mandate exemptions.
House Bill 1005, referred to Committee Number Nine Minerals. Next bill for our consideration is House Bill 1006, 1,006.
House Bill 1006, sponsored by Labor, Labor Health and Social Services.
First reading of the bill.
Vaccine requirements limitations.
Next bill for our consider, introduction and referral is House Bill 1009.
House Bill 1009, sponsored by Representative Barlow.
First reading of the bill.
COVID-19 response.
House Bill 1009 is referred to Committee Number Nine Minerals. Next bill for our consideration is House Bill 1013, 1,013.
House Bill 1013, sponsored by Representative Connolly.
First reading of the bill.
Unemployment benefits, failure to comply with federal law.
House Bill 1,013 is referred to Committee Number 10, Labor Health, Social Services. There may be a question about if I, if I referred House Bill 1,006, House Bill 1,006 is referred to Committee Number 10. My apologies if I did not refer it. Thank you, Representative Brown. So members, just, I'm going to refresh the memory. 1,001, 1,005, 1,009 went to Committee Number Nine. 1,002 went to Committee Number One. 1,006, 1,013 went to Committee Number 10. Chief Clerk, what else is on the desk? All right, we're at that order of business of adjournment. Messages from the Senate? One message from the Senate. I don't know what they've been doing down there, but we're at 13, never mind, that's, sorry. That was Representative Hallinan split and I forgot to stop the clock. Go ahead, Chief.
Message number one. Mr. Speaker, the Senate 66 Wyoming State Legislature Special Session has now been called to order by President Dan Daxter and is ready to receive any communications you wish to submit. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk.
Thank you. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move the House adjourn until Wednesday, October 27th, 2021 at 8:30 AM.
Any committee announcements? Committee announcements, you should have three committees making announcements, please. Majority for, or excuse, excuse me, Chairman Greer.
Mr. Speaker, your Committee Number Nine Minerals, Business and Economic Development, will meet at 2:30. Okay, we'll meet at 2:30. It's the East Room Number Five, that's our historic minerals room. We will consider then House Bill 001, House Bill 005, and House Bill 009. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Mr. Majority Floor Leader is coming back to the. Okay, excuse me, just a little bit of confusion because we have, as you recall, we adopted another rule. So simultaneously referred to Committee Number Two will be House Bill 1,001, 1,002, and 1,009. As you recall, members, and for the public, we adopted a rule that allows those to be simultaneously referred. So now Chairman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee Number 10, Labor Health and Social Services, will meet at 2:30 to consider two bills. We'll start with House Bill 1013 and follow that up with House Bill 1006.
Thank you very much. We've got two more committee announcements. Chairman Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Figure. Your House Appropriations will meet to review the financial impacts on House Bill One, House Bill Two, and House Bill Nine, at 2:30.
Thank you very much. Chairman Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee Number One Judiciary will meet at 2:30 PM in our usual place of abode, Room Number One in the Connector Hall to hear House 1002.
Thank you. Further announcements, further announcements. So members, I want to thank you. I know this has been a grueling procedural day. And anyway, I know it's taken a lot of energy. So I thank you for your work. Our committees, four of those committees, four committees are going to work now. And we appreciate the work they will be doing. Tomorrow, we will reconvene, as you heard, at 8:30. We will have numerous messages from the Senate and then we will proceed with Committee of the Whole. There will be discussion and we will likely have some other suggestions about how we maybe can do some things. But right now, we are, for the most part, regular order, regular order. Before we depart tonight, and I guess I started this day with, with, you know, announcing that we had a family member, one of our family members, lose their mother. Representative Burkhart is, is in, in another state, laying his mother-in-law to rest. And George Geyer, who many of you knew as that smiley guy at the door, shook your hand, said hello. So pleased to see you. You know, he's passed since we were last here. So, you know, lift up his, his family as well. So we have serious work to do. Let's go forth and do that. And I look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Thank you for your good work. All those in favor of the Majority Floor Leader's motion to adjourn until October 27th at 8:30 AM, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is approved. We are adjourned until 8:30 AM on the 27th.